Welcome to the January 25th meeting of the West Milford Board of Education. At this time, please silence all your cell phones, check the exit signs, and please take a moment of silence for our children, your parents, and our military and police officers. Please stand for slide two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Turning, Cable Vision of Warwick, and West Milford Television 77, and posted in the administration building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolutions were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all district schools. Barbara Kaye, phone call, please.
Ms. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Ms. Dwyer.
Here.
Ms. Marino. Ms. O'Brien.
He might be late.
Ms. O'Brien.
Excuse.
Ms. Lockwood.
Here.
Mr. Stillman.
Excuse.
Ms. Van Dyke.
Excuse.
Okay. Superintendent's report, please.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our January meeting. Brief update tonight. Didn't even make the agenda, but earlier today, we received notice from the National Schools of Character Foundation that two of our schools, Upper Greenwood Lake School and Maple Road School, were named Schools of Character once again. They were previously both Schools of Character for a group of term of three years, and their tenure just ended last June 30th, so they reapplied, and both were named Schools of Character earlier today. The reason our other schools are not on the list is because their three-year cycle is off. None of the schools applied the same year, so the cycle is off. So congratulations to Dr. Matliss and Mr. King, all the faculty, teachers, and staff of both schools, and most of all, our students at Upper Greenwood Lake and Maple Road, because that's a big part of the puzzle. We would not be Schools of Character without wonderful student bodies. Congratulations to both school communities.
May I add something? I would like to thank Mr. Novak for encouraging our schools to participate in this, because without his encouragement, we would have never known about the Schools of Character. So, Mr. Novak, thank you. I'll pick on you later.
You always say, "Mr. Novak the character."
Yes, he is.
No, that's what we meant. Schools of characters. And next, we have our COVID update. So we alluded to this last week. We hinted that we have some good news on the horizon, and we did pull our COVID numbers for the last two weeks. Just to give you an update, we hit that Omicron wave in late December, early January, that hit us the first two weeks of the school year. And just comparing January 5th to January 19th, our student absences, for any reason, went down 60%, over 60%. And our staff absences, for any reason, quarantine and otherwise, went down over 45%. So on Friday, January 6th, we reported 231 cases, if you recall, and that was just over a week's period. It was like a week and a half. It was the last half of winter break plus the first week of school. And then this past Friday, January 21st, we reported 21. So it was about a 90% drop in that short time. So if you've seen any graphs online over the past couple of days, you've noticed that Omicron spike, which was straight up and then straight down. That's what we observed here. So we're very confident as we end semester one in our high school and in McPepper, head into the second half of our school year. We're looking forward to getting through this pandemic and continuing with our return to normal. And our student update, Ms. Weiss.
Hello, everyone. I hope everyone had a great holiday break. At the high school, we are starting the year off strong. Today, some of our students finished the Sealed by Literacy test. Also, next one, students will be able to retake the ALSA. Our junior prom is set for March 25th at Casa Bianca, and our senior prom is being worked out right now. The Spring Musical of Anastasia will be held March 10th through the 13th. We are so excited to see this show, as the last Spring Musical two years ago was cut short. Our students have been working extremely hard after school, and it's going to be a really good performance. Our winter sports are working really hard in the middle of the season. Our boys varsity basketball team just had a really exciting win against Lakeland in the last couple seconds of the game. Our girls varsity basketball team is on a nice winning streak with a record of 6 and 7. Our Unified Basketball Team just had their first game against Memphis this weekend. That is helpful, as the teamwork on the court shines there. Our Ice Hockey Team is stepping up with a nice 4-0 victory over Quetzal last week. Our girls and boys bowling teams are having outstanding seasons. The boys having a record of 7 and 3, and the girls having 4 and 4. Our Unified Bowling Team has their first big match coming up tomorrow. Our wrestlers competed in the Passaic County Coaches Tournament this weekend, and we had a first-place win by Ben Marchetto, a second-place win by Paul Munier, and a third-place win by Nick Frimbo. And the girls' saber team for winning the gold and going to state's team. Billy Brown won the individual gold heading to state's with a 7-0 shutout. Sarah Kular also won a spot to individual state with six wins. Our boys fencing team is having a great season with their county tournament coming up this weekend. Wyeth Fod plays second in districts qualifying for the state tournament. Our Winters Cheer team is 5-1 right now and tied for first place after now for the Big North Conference. The Dance Team is hosting their big home competition on Saturday, January 29th. This past weekend, at their first competition, they placed sixth in jazz and second in the team performance. Currently, the Student Council is working on two big projects. Our first one is the Senior Choice Award that we hold every year. This week, we collected the top nominations for our senior choice categories, and the final ballot is being made and will be sent out soon. And our other big project is a volleyball tournament on March 8th at the high school gym. At this event, we are raising money for our town's Special Olympics. That's all I have for today. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Abigail. Okay. Director of Education, Dan.
Thank you, Ms. Dwyer. I have just a brief update tonight. We've talked about dual enrollment courses a few times in Education Committee and then also at some recent board meetings. At our last meeting, I mentioned that we were working on a number of courses, and I'd be able to let you know which courses we are going to be moving forward on. So we are in the process of, although they're not official, the courses we believe that are going to be moving forward, that we're preparing for in our program of studies for next year. Dual enrollment, which Mr. reminded everyone of dual enrollment, is a course that a student will receive high school credits as well as college credits. So for dual enrollment, we're going to be able to do World Cuisine, Digital Art, Auto Shop, Automotive, Philosophy, and Computer Programming. In addition to those new dual enrollment offerings that we're going to have, we are also going to have the opportunity for, and I don't have the names of specific organizations yet, because that part is still being worked out. There's a number of different areas that we can go. But our CAD students, computer-related drafting, and our auto students will be able to take a certification test at the end of the course that will provide them with a, many schools refer to it as a micro-credential, that they can take with them to their next level of education, or if they were to an auto shop student to apply at Toyota or a local Ford dealer, they would have a certificate coming out of our program that they've achieved a certain level of performance. So that's an exciting development for our students in these programs, and we're very proud of the progress. And I'll know the specific organization that certificate is run through at our next aid committee.
Dan, what colleges are doing the certification?
So we have a few different ones. We are, World Cuisine and, World Cuisine in Ohio will be through Passaic County Community College. Digital Art, Philosophy, and Computer Programming could possibly be through either William Patterson or Ramifol. We are investigating. So when I first presented, I talked about a relationship with William Patterson, and at that time, I referred to some of the roadblocks with course syllabus, staff with certificates, master's degrees in certain areas. And we've found that other colleges have different types of requirements. So we've been working, like I said, Karen Johnson in the guidance department has been working really hard at trying to find the universities that will match the abilities of our staff. So it's not all through William Patterson, as I was working towards in the beginning. Now we have a variety of different programs. But although it may be through Ramifol, all of these credits are transferable. So it doesn't mean the student would have to go to that college.
Thank you. Special reports at our course on this floor. You have the minutes from the December 14th meeting for regular meeting and the executive session. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to approve the following four hundred and fifty minutes from December 14th for shop regular meeting and executive session.
Second?
I'll second.
Voice vote, please.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Van Dyke is not here. There is no presidency report at this time. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comments, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. All members of the public speaking during the public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign a register, provide it and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be represented, responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified by their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Are there any people who wish to speak? Okay. Motion to close public comments?
I'll make the motion to close public comments.
In second. Okay. At this time, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we have Kathy Heller over here for New Jersey School Boards Association to do our presentation on ethics. And I ask that everyone listen very carefully, because it is a very important part of our positions as board members. Thank you. Kathy, do you have?
You have a slideshow?
Just pause for a moment. I'm just checking to make sure our video stream is working properly.
It's boring, Abigail. It's boring.
We're good.
We're good. Oh, here, I see it coming. All right. You too. I'm ready. All right, great. Thank you so much, Carrie, for having me here. Thanks to the board. It's always a joy to come and see you guys. And you're right, this is very important, even though it's a lot of information. So if you have any questions now or later, let me know. But I think all of you have, I think we've done this, I think everyone has talked, you know, with me about school ethics, right? We have done this presentation for everyone, I think, around the dais, but it's very important to do it annually, right? To talk about this annually as part of your CUSAC. And also, I love doing it in public, because a lot of times, people don't understand the role of the board member, and this can be very enlightening for those who listen. So thank you again. And also, it's important because it's the law, right? We have to know what this says. You are beholden to it. And you'll receive electronically, if it happened already, Barbara, you sent it on out first or you're going to have to look, right?
No, we're sending it to them.
That's my preference, so thank you. The School Ethics Act in its entirety, and it's long, it's four pages, it's fine print, but really, at the bottom of it all, the whole reason why we have it is to hold the respect and trust of the public. And to even avoid giving a justifiable impression that you are violating their trust, right? We had a case a few years ago where the commission ruled, the School Ethics Commission, which we'll talk about in a second, ruled that a board member, while not technically in violation of the Ethics Act, did create a justifiable impression that he was violating it, and so they found him in violation of the Ethics Act. So it's a really interesting snake biting its tail. So it's kind of good for us to talk about this. And again, if you have any questions on this now or later, by all means, ask me. I'll start out by saying, I'm not an attorney. I am very steeped in the School Ethics Act just by the nature of the work that I do. But if I can't answer your question, we have NJFBA Legal, who can give information, and you do have your board attorney, who really is the best source of information. So if there's a question that you need attorney input on, you go for your board president and ask for that kind of input, and that could be very, very helpful. It's a uniform standard for everybody in the state, so I like to think of this as a board member's best friend. I mean, certainly, a field service rep's best friend, because everyone's held to the same standards, from, you know, top of the state to the bottom, everything in between. That's a good thing, right? And also, I want to note that your CUSAC is affected by your, you know, by following the School Ethics Act, which is kind of interesting, because the Ethics Act really is targeted to individual board members. So we're all responsible for following it. But if anyone falls down on that individually, the board and the school district suffers. They get dinged, okay? I mean, first of all, work of the board suffers when the public doesn't trust you any longer. But also, there's points taken off of your CUSAC. So you have to do your mandatory training. You got to get your disclosure statements in. Got to talk about the Code of Ethics. We're doing that now. And if anyone is found in violation of the Ethics Act, that's points off your CUSAC, too. So good things to talk about and to know about. So, and you've seen this slide before, I'm sure, but this is what the Ethics Act did. Establish all of these things, right? The mandatory training, the disclosure statements we just talked about. The commission itself, which we'll talk about in a second. Conflict of interest in Code of Ethics, that's what we'll talk about in more detail. So you will get a copy of this slide. No reason to take its picture, but this is the mandatory training that NJFBA offers, and you are obligated to take. Only NJFBA offers this stuff, and it's all online right now, but we are moving towards in-person as best we can. We are really looking forward to workshops in October. We really are. So hopefully, we'll be able to offer mandatory then. In the meantime, don't wait. Take your training as early as you can, right? So Ethics Commission, this is what it looks like, right? They're volunteers. They're not paid for this. And it must be a great job listening to bad board member behavior, meeting after meeting after meeting, but that's what they do, right? And there should be nine people on the commission, but now I think we're down to six. I think we're down to only six. The governor makes the appointments, but, I mean...
What does he know?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, what does he know?
Well, I will tell you, well, you know what? With all due respect, what he should know is that school boards need help in backing this up, right? Because when people follow the Ethics Act, it benefits everybody. And when they violate it, or seem to be violating it, it hurts everybody on the board, and in the district, I would argue, right? So we do need people to do this job. And I don't know if you've been watching the news lately, but school board meetings are becoming very interesting on both sides of the dais, right? I would think that you'd want to bulk up the Ethics Commission. But I don't, respectfully, again, I don't think this is on the governor's front burner, and it wasn't on the front burner of the governor before him or before that, because the maximum number we've had since I've been a school board member was a big high of like seven members. I mean, maybe eight, maybe, but it's never been at nine the entire time I've been immersed in school board work. So anyway, it is what it is, right? There's not much we can do about that, except kind of know what the playing field situation is like. But what is also interesting about this is that the majority are non-school officials, right? There's a little spot for school board members. There's only one of them in there now. There's a little spot for school administrators. There's only one there now. But the majority of board members on the School Ethics Commission are not sitting where you sit. They don't have anything to do with running or overseeing a school district. So that's kind of interesting. And when you're thinking about, these are the people who are deciding whether or not you're in line with the Ethics Act. They're going to be using, the majority of them are using that viewpoint, right? And so they're members of the general public. And members of the general public can and do complain about school board members, rightfully or wrongfully. So, and that's a part of how the commission does its work. It hears ethics complaints from anyone who wants to follow. And anyone can, right? Advisory opinions are different. Advisory opinions are, I dare say, friendlier, right? They're just advice. And the only people who can ask for an advisory opinion are school officials. Board members, you can ask about yourself or a fellow board member on your, who sits around the dais with you, right? You can't ask about, I don't know, Montague. You have to ask about West Milford, if you're in West Milford. And it's just advice. I'm thinking about doing this, would I have a conflict, right? We're in the middle of this. Are we proceeding rightly? Am I proceeding rightly? And they're never punitive. If the Ethics Commission determines that that action that you're looking to undertake is not in line with the Ethics Act, they'll just tell you, don't do it. And they trust that you don't do it. There's never a penalty, right? And if the advice that they issue you, which will be, you know, just a letter, Becky, you write a letter to them, they write a letter to you, no fees, no special forms, nothing like that. But if they've given you the kind of advice that would benefit other school boards, they'll publish that advisory opinion on their website. They'll take your name out, your district out, but the advice will be there, and that's very valuable for people like me who work with this sort of, in this realm, certainly for school board attorneys, right? Certainly for school board committees. But you need six votes from the commissioners to publish that on the School Ethics Commission's website. And we're down to only six. And we're not seeing a lot of these being published at all. There weren't any published last year. There was only one year before. You can go on the School Ethics Commission's website and read all this stuff. Ethics complaints are always put up there, and they are not scrubbed. They've got the details. So that makes for some really interesting and somewhat embarrassing reading, I will tell you that. And the other difference between an advisory opinion and ethics complaint is an ethics complaint is something that you already did, right? You did something. It's over. But you really bothered someone enough that they're going to file an ethics complaint about you. And like I said, anyone can do it. So we want to avoid those, because those are punitive if you're found to have violated the Ethics Act. You can go, you know, there's four different measures of penalty. On the low end, a reprimand, which is a rebuke by the commissioner. And the best thing I can say about a reprimand is that it's kind of between you and the Commissioner of Education, where they're telling you, you've done something wrong. It's published on the Ethics Commission's website, but that's where it stops. A center is step up, where the board president has to read from the dais, what you've done wrong and why that's wrong, right? So that's humiliating. You could be suspended. You could be removed from your board for a certain number of meetings, or you could be, if your behavior was egregious, removed. And the commission recommends the penalty, but the Commissioner of Education signs off on it, right? This is just a visual on what kind of work the SEC did last year. So you'll see that there were at least 30 people, well, 30 people who just never got their training done, no matter how many messages were sent to them in seven. Four were kicked off, right? And three people were kicked off for not doing their disclosure statements, right? But as far as the ethics violations, right, that were alleged, 21 out of 29 were dismissed. Six were penalized. And we'll talk a little bit about them going forward. And advisory opinions, you'll know, they issued 20, or at least 20 were requested, but none of them were put on the website. This will be in your electronic packet, but you saw this last year, because this was from 2020. So that's all I've got on that. Code of Ethics, though, is always worth discussing every year. And we'll hit on the things that are, if not new and different, that were talking about in a little bit of a different way in 2022, right? So A, all right? I never used to waste much time on A. If you could follow the ways of time. I mean, A is just so basic, right? I'll follow the law, right? Whatever the state board tells me to do, whatever the court, whatever legislators tell us to do, that's what we are going to do. As board members, we're obligated. That is about as black and white as it usually gets. But I'm telling you, like, this year, we've had some struggles with this one. Because people do not understand, it seems, that an executive order has the force of law, and school board members are not, cannot ignore an executive order at will. They can't. It's breaking the law, not only the executive order, but also the School Ethics Act. Your hands are tied if you're going to stay in line with the Code of Ethics, which I know you want to do, so. So I have to talk about this, and I don't mind talking about it. I just think it's interesting that I do. B, however, though, B is real nice. B is my favorite. B is very positive. This is why you're here, right? This is what brought you to the dais. This is why your constituents elected you, to make your decisions in terms of the educational welfare of all the children in your district, right? So we certainly don't discriminate based on ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. But we frame our decision-making in that context of all children, not just our kids or our neighbors' kids, or the kids who are bullied, or the kids who are gifted and talented. Everybody. It's everybody. And that's a beautiful thing, although that is, and that's your charge. It's as simple and as difficult as that. But I love that one. That's my favorite part of the Code of Ethics. And then we start with the job description, right? So C, your policymaking, planning, and appraisal, right? That's what a board does. That's the oversight. That's what 30,000 foot meet, right? And you only consult, you only enact those after you've consulted those who will be affected by them. Your public comments that you offer every meeting, right? This district did a marvelous job with district planning, which is in the works. We're going to print that up, so you guys can approve it. But that's what you do as board members, right? That's what this board, I know, does as a whole. So we're good with C. D continues the job description, but this one gets violated all the time, which is interesting, because we say it all the time, right? You don't run the schools as a school board member, but you see to it that they are well-run, and you do that with your fellow board members. So all the day-to-day, right? All the, you know, more targeted tasks. To see that the goals that you have for this school district are enacted, that's administration's job. And that's a wonderful thing. I, God bless our superintendents. I really, you know, give them kudos. But that is what they do for our school district. We are the oversight, together with our fellow board members, too. That one tends to get a little, sometimes that bounces off of people's skulls. I don't know why, but it, within this is embedded the fact that you don't go to your superintendent as a board meeting member and ask him to run a report, do a research project, ask him to do something special for you. No, it's with your fellow board members, right? To see to it that the schools are well-run. And E continues, right? This one, too, gets violated a lot. And that, and it's that, it's that part. I will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. So we'll talk a little bit more about this in depth because social media is making this one a really interesting part of the Code of Ethics, right? So we'll talk a little bit more about that. F, again, I never used to talk much about F because you're here for your independent judgment. Politics stays out of it. But politics have really been gaining a lot of influence, unfortunately, on the work of individual school board members and individual boards of education, unfortunately, throughout the country. In New Jersey, that is not allowed. That is against the law. That is against the law. And I'm sure that as a board member, you want to use your independence. That is why. G is very verbose, but it comes down to two concepts. And one is confidentiality, and the other is truth. So anything that is shared in the executive session or distributed with the word confidential on it, you know, you mentioned student matters, personnel matters are really relevant here. They stick with the board, okay? And the superintendent, they don't go anywhere else. And that's important, not just for adherence to the Code of Ethics, but also as human beings, right? Because confidential information is very sensitive information. And speaking that out can really harm someone. It really harms them. And truth, of course, you know, I don't think I need to opine on how important truth is, but sometimes people do get that wrong. And it's important that you're providing information that is true and accurate, right? And luckily, luckily, you don't typically have to do that to the media outlets or anything like that. You buy laws, I'm sure, has that on your president to speak for the board, your superintendent speaks to the district. But I have to keep it, this, again, social media gives people a lot of opportunity to violate G or come close to violating G. We'll talk a little bit about that more. H, I really love because this is really why, you know, a district can be successful and a board can be successful even though it's made up of laypeople, right? I worked in banking for my whole career, but I could still be a great board member. I wouldn't know how to hire the best teacher at all. But my superintendent certainly does. So, and that's the case with every school district in the state. So you need the recommendation of your superintendent to make a hire, right? So that's a good one. And I absolutely love, you know, I always have. But when you read this one now, "I will support and protect personnel, the school personnel in the proper performance of their duties." That is a very powerful statement during the pandemic especially. You know, this is something that you really is, it has gained some new importance. But it's always been a very important thing to have in your back pocket because people who don't understand the role of the board member, that we're policymaking, planning, oversight, we're not the day-to-day, we're not personnel issues, we're none of that. Oftentimes, they will, well-intended, not bad people, kind of come to you and ask you, you know, try to rope you into a conversation about someone that they're not really happy with. And you can just pull that eye from the Code of Ethics and say, this is really not my place. I can't be in this conversation. I just can't. People look at you differently once you're a school board member, right? So you have to keep the Code of Ethics in mind all the time, even though you've heard me say your authority is only in play at the dais, right? Once you walk away, you don't have any authority. You only have authority when you're voting on agenda items. But people do look at us differently. And that's what the, that's what the School Ethics Act is really all about. And lastly, J, which, you know, I slide into very beautifully. If you are presented with complaints, you do not solve them, of course, but you do need to let your superintendent know just what you've heard, just what you've heard, and then kind of back away. And if it ever gets to the board that, you know, you're the last stop on the chain of command, your attorney will help you, will walk you through that. But in the meantime, just let your public know, anyone who approaches you, what that chain of command is. Play with a teacher, goes to the teacher, might go with the principal, goes to the, you know, assistant superintendent, superintendent, all the way up, right? Like that. But the board is the last stop on that. And so, and we're, and really, we're only a valid stop on the chain of command in, after the failure of an administrative solution, which is different, I might add, than an unpopular administrative solution, right? So we really don't get involved in the day-to-day Ethic Act. Thank you, guys, right? Any questions on all of that business? Okay, thank you. This is the part where we talk about, you know, bad behavior from last year. Woo, so fun. And I'm very happy to say, last time I was here with you, we had four violations of the Code of Ethics, and two of them were my district. And now we're up to six, and only one of them was fun district. So yay, Northwest New Jersey, we're doing great. And this one wasn't us. A board member who threatened a coach's job, you know, that person got suspended for three months. Well deserved, too. This one spoke to conflicts, which we'll talk a little bit more about later. But a board member who had someone belonging to her working in a school district inadvertently discredited yet spoke on the superintendent's miracles. You can't be a part of that if you have someone in your family working in a school district. So that was, that was a reprimand there. That was a conflict. Deacon who voted with his fellow board members to approve the use of school facilities for his church, which pays him a stipend, that's a conflict also. So he got a reprimand as well. Now we start getting a little more interesting. A board member allowed his picture and his name to appear on paper flyers during, during the election, right? Along with two other people, I forget, the planning board or whatever. Two of, you know, some, some, some officials were on there. And this flyer was kind of, I mean, it was just trash talking in a particular political party, saying, you know, if these people win, our town is going to, you know, be a cauldron of hate and this and that, levity blow, whatever the heck they said. I'm paraphrasing, but it was pretty, you know, it is incendiary. It was bad news. And the guy had his name and his picture and his title as board member there. So that's not good, right? He's not speaking for the Biscataway Board of Education when he does that. He's speaking for himself. But he didn't note that at all. So it's very easy for the public to make guesses about the Biscataway Board of Education's point of view, and that would be inaccurate. So he got slapped with a censure, I think because he was off the board by the time this thing was finished. But E, F, and G, violations. And then we keep getting even more interesting. So we've got a board member who used one of those hyperlocal, like tap into whatever things, to write an endorsement for a candidate for BOA. Nothing new there, right? You can do that. You just have to put a disclaimer up there noting that you're talking for yourself, not for the rest of the board, right? And he did that. And he did that. But as the circumstances were, he was endorsing the rival of an incumbent, so someone who sat with him at the dais. And when he wrote his endorsement of the other candidate, he, you know, belittled his fellow board member. Said she was so bad, and oh my God, she's an embarrassment. As a board member, I sit there next to her, and I cringe every time she talks to teachers. Oh, it's so bad sitting at the dais with her. I'm paraphrasing again, but that's pretty much what he said. So he put the disclaimer up there, like, I'm just talking as an individual. But then he started to talk as a board member. That's not good, okay? You gotta walk the walk after you talk the talk. And that was a violation, okay? And this one, okay, a board member who, I mean, I hate to say, almost lose track of them now, who on his personal Facebook page made some really awful comments about particular people and particular religions. And he was given a censure, okay? Again, I think he was off, in fact, I know he was off the board by the time this thing made its way to the Ethics Commission. So it wasn't as severe a penalty. But, you know, more and more cases about social media are coming in front of the Ethics Commission. And the language in those decisions are getting stronger. I'm personally grateful for the clarity. And what I wanted to show, share with you is, is some language from a past decision. So that being said, here's the disclaimer. It'll be in your package. This will keep you clean, right? If, if you act this way, okay? If you act this way, right? So don't make yourself known as a board member like the other guy did, right? But even if you use this, right, and you keep to your role as an individual, there can be some problems with the things that you post on social media, like for instance, Mr. Tufana, right? Mr. Tufana was a board member who made some pretty awful remarks about Muslims on his Facebook page. And the School Ethics Commission put this language in its decision, which I don't mind reading aloud because I think it's really important and very, very clear, that they wrote, "The school board member is still a publicly elected school official who is charged with serving, among other things, the educational needs of a diverse, dynamic, multifaceted student population. Public words which derogate from the mission of a board of education serve no purpose, create unnecessary hostility and animosity within a community, and ultimately have the greatest detrimental impact on the very people that the respondent is cast to serve, the students. Although the commission acknowledges the sanctity of the First Amendment, words that deliberately cause divisiveness should have no place in the educational setting." Really strong stuff, right? And I will tell you that, you know, over the years, you've seen it, right? Board members put things on their Facebook page or social media and say First Amendment rights. And we know you don't lose your First Amendment rights when you become a board member. But you're also beholden to the School Ethics Act. And you need to listen to these words from the commission, the body that is charged with making sure that our school board members are in line with the Ethics Act. And this is what they said about that. And what is also very interesting to me is the fact that, you know, in that last line there, the educational setting, like your Facebook page is now part of the educational setting. I think it's kind of fascinating. So thanks for letting me talk about that. I get off, you work it up on my clock about this. It's not West Milford's fault, believe me, it's not. It's just, it's really something that we, what you see. So we've talked about this social media in summary. You'll have this, but just, you know, be careful on social media. And so we'll move on to the conflicts of interest. These are spelled out in the Ethics Act, but they are very nuanced. So it's a case-by-case basis often to determine what's a conflict and what's not. So all your friendly field service rep, I'm free, are attorneys at school boards. We'll give you legal information. Perhaps you will need to use your school board attorney for the best advice. But, you know, just make sure you keep your nose clean on this. You might even wind up writing for an advisory opinion to determine if you're conflicted or not. But in any case, you have to know the definition of an immediate family member and a family member when we're talking about conflicts. And at the very bottom there, you'll get it in your packets, but it notes that the SEC definition of immediate family is your spouse or your dependent child who lives in the same household. So as far as the Ethics Commission is concerned, my dad is not in my immediate family. But he's a relative, right? So this is the big definition. It's everybody. It's your stepparents and your parents, your grandchildren, your grandparents, your half-sister, your niece, your daughter-in-law, all that business. Everybody's here, right? So we keep track of who, of where these people work, basically. So if you have a relative, right, the big picture, that works in West Milford, and sometimes that happens, right? You're elected to the board and you've got somebody who works in the district. That's fine. You can still be a board member, but you cannot take place in any matters that have to do with the hire or evaluation or compensation of the superintendent. You're just completely out of those, right? And also, the board may not hire a relative of yours after you're seated unless there's an exception granted by the executive county superintendent. But when we come to collective bargaining, that's another area where we have to know where everybody in our family works, right? Because it affects your ability to participate in negotiations. So if you have anyone belonging to you who works in the district, you're not only out of the whole superintendent situation, but you can't participate in negotiations from start to finish. That's a big, solid no. But if you or your immediate family member works out of district in a, you know, and is unionized, right, locally? So, you know, your husband works in Cedar Grove, you cannot participate in negotiations until, basically, the final vote to ratify the contract. When everything's settled and ready to go, then you're back in, and you're back at the dais, and you can vote yes or no. If you have someone in that big picture, relative, right? Your niece, your stepparent, what have you, who is unionized out of district, who works in Cedar Grove, then you can participate from start to finish, typically. You'll see that there's a bunch of asterisks all over there, so there's always exceptions, right? But you have to be aware. Typically, and here's some examples. We can walk you through them if you're faced with them. But basically, the most, the most widespread of these other possible conflicts that we see are if your family member or your relative has what's called heightened union involvement. Like my sister-in-law, who works in Compton Lakes, was, you know, on her district's negotiations team, and I probably can't participate in negotiations in Warren Township as far as a board member, right? But again, there's a lot of gray, there's a lot of nuance. So seek legal advice when you need.
I have a question about that. Can you go back to the chart?
Yep, sure.
So if someone was in the middle right there, or either way, if they cannot participate in negotiations, then no.
Yes.
Can they make suggestions to the negotiating team? Do you not talk about it at all?
No, stay away. Yeah, because, you know what? On this other slide, Kate, I have a nice little graphic. No, right? The no status. So don't take part in any kind of discussion or vote, right? Yeah, no, thanks for asking the question. Thanks for, and this chart actually came directly out of that advisory opinion there. So if you need further clarification, you'll find that on the School Ethics Commission's website under 82471. It's issued in 2007.
Thank you.
No, thank you for asking. And that advice has changed over the years, but this is the most current advice that we've got, okay? But if they, oh, I didn't know that. I thought it was different. You were probably right at some time, but right now, this is what we're going with. Doctrine of necessities, is that an issue here, Terry? I don't know. No. Okay, good. All right, so we'll skip on over that. But volunteerism, I do like to talk about because a lot of board members, I get it, you know, I volunteered a lot in the school and didn't give it a second floor. But of course, at some point, somebody did something that bothered somebody, and the Ethics Commission said, ah, let's take a look at this. And it's not a bad thing for them to have done that because we don't want to turn what's supposed to be a good thing into something that's misinterpreted or bad or that, God forbid, goes up, bucks up against the Ethics Act, right? Or the Code of Ethics. And a lot of times, people, well-meaning, are getting mighty close to, or at least seem to be close to violating good old D, right? I will run the schools and see that they are well-run with my fellow board. So to keep your nose clean, you ask yourself these questions, right? For one time, basically a one-time thing like chaperoning or reading or coming in for career day, that's fine, right? But a regular gig would be a problem. So you ask yourself, am I giving or taking orders from staff or students? No. Is it going to look like I work there because I'm there all the time? No. I don't touch the district's money, absolutely not. And would you be the lead volunteer for a school club, right? So if I want to start the Warren Township Art History Club, I couldn't do that as a board member, right? But what I could do is I could lead a Girl Scout troop. I could, you know, volunteer for the PTO or the recommission because that's a separate organization from the board, from the school district, with its own bank account, its own files, its own tax ID numbers. So that's okay. But as long as your answers line up with these, you're good to go. Interview committees, I don't know if you guys do that here, but basically, the SEC has said in two very long opinions that they don't really like them. But then again, the superintendent owns the hiring process. So if he feels that one or two board members participating in an interview committee for a high-level hire, that's okay. Just watch your behavior. It's worth reading those if that's, if that's of interest. Exit interviews, so interesting, right? Those other two, they go on forever. Exit interviews, they're, it was, it's like a one paragraph. Real quick, it was a solid no. Solid no. That's a violation of the D, so, okay, all right, interesting. And so that's a whole bunch of school ethics that, again, I'm very happy to have spoken with you about. But if you forget all of that and just remember these three things, you'll be ahead of the game, right? So read school board notes regularly. Because any kind of new development or any bad behavior that you need to be aware of and kind of check yourself with, it's going to be in school board notes. You know, as I mentioned, consult with your board attorney when necessary. This is a team sport, so use your resources. And also, just, you know, it's a pandemic, so it's a great excuse to stay in touch with your family a little bit more regularly, just to make sure you know where everybody's working and you don't, you know, compromise your work on the board at all, all right? Or the collective bargaining agreement. And that's kind of that, Terry. So thanks for the time. It really is all about trust and respect. And I must say, I do respect this board a great deal. It's my pleasure to work with you. So if you need to lean on me and I can guide you through anything, by all means, I'm pleased to do it. Because I honor you. This is not easy to do these days, school board work. And it is actually School Board Appreciation Month, right? But I appreciate you every day of every month of every year, so... And you deserve it, and you deserve it. So thanks so much, Terry.
Thank you, Kathy. And thank you for being such a good resource. I don't know how many of you have questions about New Jersey School Board or school law, but whatever you need, you can call Kathy at New Jersey School Boards and she'll answer you, she's very good that way. So thank you very much for being here, and we appreciate it.
Oh, my pleasure. Thanks again, guys, good to see you. And I'll see you again when the strategic plan's all ready.
Thank you, Kathy. Good to talk.
Oh, thank you. Barbara, do note that Mr. Greeno is in attendance. And he did attend the Ethics presentation. Kate?
Yes.
Would you please do education?
Uh, we got to adopt the agenda.
Oh, the agenda.
There's no changes on the motion to adopt the agenda as is.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Including the hand carry? Including the hand carry, yeah. What's the... Yeah, I...
Hi.
Hi.
Are you ready? I can do it now?
Yep, thanks.
I'd like to meet the motion to move numbers one through five under education.
Any discussion? Oh, second? Mike's second it is. Any discussion on one through five?
Hopefully.
Roll call, Mr. Francisco?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Okay, personnel and student affairs, Mr. Greeno?
Yes, so...
One through fourteen.
Okay.
Seventeen.
So can I ask that we gave a hand carry to the executive, uh, number fifteen on the hand carry to the executive session?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do you have to go down there? Okay. Can someone make the motion, please, Ray?
I did it.
Okay, you say it. Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Greeno?
For table access, yes.
Yeah. Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
All right, so now we have, make a motion to approve items one through fourteen and hand carry items, hand carried one, item sixteen, and seventeen.
Any discussion? Oh, second? Hi, second. Any discussion? I have a question, not sure if it's a question or a concern, but on number thirteen, the women's studies.
Oh, I knew there was something I wanted to talk about, babe.
Okay. Okay, it sounds to me more like an academic course than a club. And I looked at the information you sent me, but I'm concerned that the purpose to educate the community shouldn't be the, should not be the focus of a club. And the other thing, I have a question about the activities. It says that there are projects planned. I want to know what those projects are and how they're going to affect the community. And is there teaching going on? Or is it truly a club where kids are immersing themselves into a, into their own discussions and the empowerment of women? So that's my, so right now, I would vote no on that unless there's further information.
So I actually was the opposite. I've seen a bunch of posts on this from the community that seems very excited about this club. And I wanted to give thanks and kudos for starting this club because I think it's something that we should be praising.
Okay, Ray?
So if I'm hearing you, you think that maybe this should be an academic class?
That's what it sounds like. It sounds more like a class to me. And that's my concern. It sounds more like a class than it does a club, from the information. Kate?
From what I understand, just from the community, is that this was a club requested by students, which is typically how clubs have always been. And I've never seen a club have an academic curriculum. So, I mean, we can meet numerous clubs with all different things, so...
But this one looks like it does have one.
So you have more information, I think, than the rest of us?
I have the email that Dr. Anamal sent to me because I asked him how to get that on. So maybe you can share that with us later. But that's my only concern, is that if it's going to be academic, I want to see kids get credit for it, okay? Otherwise, I don't have a problem.
So you say you can share that?
It's on the email. He sent it to me today.
Oh, it's not a full-credit class, it's an after-school club. It probably needs about once a week for the school semester. I'm going to say once a week for an hour, give or take. Obviously, things change during the course of the spring semester. There's no curriculum, but they do discuss issues that are current events or issues that are of interest to the group.
But it's activity, it's projects, it's projects. The word project worries. Thank you.
For credit?
Right.
It's definitely not for credit. There's no credit awarded. Could it be a full credit? So could this be something that maybe they do as a club and develops into a class?
The club has projects. They have a lot of projects. They do a lot of things, but...
It's not political.
Oh, women's studies is political? I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
How is women's studies...
You read the email, okay? He'll go over the email with you. But that's, I mean, that is my concern. And I expressed it, okay? Yeah. Okay, any other discussion? No other discussion? Okay, roll call, all, please?
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Okay, operations in fine, yes. Ray, could you take that? Oh, wait, Mike, Mike, are you on operations?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, could you take that, please?
Sure.
Still trying to get these graphs out.
Prove item number one on the agenda?
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Prove item number two on the agenda?
Clear? Roll call?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Abstained.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lock...
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstained.
Okay, and...
Prove items three through eight under here.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Okay, policies, Mrs. Stevenson?
Make the motion to move items one through five. Second.
Roll call?
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Any questions?
Any questions about this story?
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Greeno?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Okay, the bidding, reports, the liaison, part-time recreation, Mr. Conklin?
Bargain.
Push the button where the people's first. Turn to rest. There you go, in that, you go.
All right, departure rec. We've got registrations now open for indoor soccer. Games will be played on Sunday, starting February 20th at the Rec Center. And they are looking for volunteers to help assist. We're starting up indoor kids' four hockey program. If you're interested, please let, contact someone at the Rec Center and hopefully they can get this started. That's it.
Uh, state team? No report. Superintendent's roundtable, clear?
So these are the minutes from the December 16th meeting. There was a question about the mask mandate that was set to expire. Obviously, we had an update to that, it was extended. At this time, there was no update. The Chromebook user agreement, there was a question about when it was going to be put in place. And it's going to be put in place in September 2022, for the start of the new school year. There was a question about the Highlander Academy. They have a full-time nurse and administrator. And that was answered, saying that they have a half-time nurse for the academy that's shared with Marshall Hill and UGL. And the administrator is also the supervisor of special services and their office is based at Highlander Academy. And there was a question about whether there's cameras in the Highlander Academy. And it's actually rented from the church. And there are cameras downstairs in the preschool and in the stairwells. There was some follow-ups on transportation and substitutes, on how the open house went. And the update was given that hopefully two additional drivers would be approved. Post-pandemic policies, updates about just assemblies and PTO events. And Dr. Anamal and Mr. Novak are going to talk to the administrators in the buildings just to make sure that those are going forward. An update on the UGL nurse, at that time, there was not. Pill press, any update? And they just said that there was no update. This may or may not be a legal matter. The district attorney is working towards an update. And Dr. Anamal will share one table.
Thank you.
And the next meeting is this Thursday.
We have the State County School Boards Association. We have nothing, New Jersey School Boards Association. So we just had the Ethics Presentation, which is very good. Mrs. Romeo, legislative?
No report.
No report. Technology oversight, Mr. Greeno?
Yeah, so the overhaul of the website is moving along. And I think the biggest thing that came out of that now is that we do have a good group of parents. We've spoken already to staff members. The next step is Alex, Dan, Robert to talk to parents and kind of get a handle on what we want. And there's some really good parents that are part of that committee. So really, it's about that next phase. I think that group is probably going to meet sometime within the next couple of weeks. So there'll probably be a few meetings and then we can start to grasp that. I think we've also chosen who it is that we're going to use. I think some of them maybe still have to be better, but I think we've chosen who we're going to use as our provider. They provide for hundreds and hundreds of school districts in New Jersey alone, probably thousands across the country. And thanks to all the people that work at Rec Center.
Okay, thank you. And we have a meeting on Friday at 9:00 a.m. with township representatives. And it's going to be, I guess, a Google Meet meeting. So we have that. Okay, West Milford?
Wasn't first?
No, it said...
It didn't say meet. Oh, yeah?
Yes, it did.
Meet?
Yeah. Okay, West Milford Municipal Alliance, Courtney? Resident? Yeah?
Okay, we had a meeting. You know, they had a, their whole focus was the prevention and education for substance abuse. So they had a presenter from the Recovery Centers of America. They had some insight into, you know, COVID and how they're seeing a lot more alcoholism come about. So they're going to be making flyers to hand out and pamphlets to hand out at some of their upcoming events to really focus on their prevention and education for substance abuse. They also spoke a lot about the township's decision on their marijuana laws that they have just instituted. They're kind of waiting to hear more and focusing on defeating our youth in not abusing.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Okay, old business. Ray?
I think this falls under old business, but that's the Kilgallen Field and maybe where we stand and what we're thinking of doing with regard to budget for next year. I know we've done some great things so far this year, I'm sorry, throughout the years. We turfed the football field, put up new bleachers. We do have a new fieldhouse up there that could use by multiple sports now, I think, right? We've resurfaced two gym floors. So we've done all those things. I think maybe the next step is, you know, what are we going to do for a program that uses that varsity baseball field? The thoughts about what we're going to do from a budget perspective for next year? How we're thinking of that? Barbara, want to jump in?
Yeah.
I don't believe Mr. Kelly has anything, it's basically going to be a maintenance-type thing. He's taken the direction from the committee. He's put out a request for proposals on some engineering and some sprinklers for our grazing infield. So we have irrigation. But I haven't had an opportunity to talk to him, see if he's gotten anything back. And that'll be discussed in February at the next committee meeting.
Yeah, I know he's done a lot of legwork. I know there was a lot of legwork, probably from the summer of last year to, you know, through the fall. I know there was a lot of legwork, probably from the summer of last year to, you know, through the fall. I just, I just, I think it's good for people.
Well, we didn't do much because baseball kept using the bleach.
But no, I think he did some external legwork to find out.
Yes, but I don't think he, I don't think he went to an outside, uh, contractor for any kind of information, which is what he's doing now. And, um, so in February, when we have our, our committee meeting, we will be able to discuss the information that he's gotten, and we are changing the times for the committee meeting for the next month.
Yeah.
So that, um, hopefully it'll be a little bit easier for Mr. Conklin to attend. He'll work better with his work schedule. So, um, you have more information then?
Yeah, and I know probably a big piece of that is, I think you just mentioned it. Like, we have to know, right, the public has to know too, that that field is going to have to probably be shut down for
Right.
a period of time, you know? Again, we need to let it rest. We need to, like, if we put a grass in field, you gotta give that kind of time to take to. I, I just want to make sure people are aware of it. This isn't where we just make a fix and people are going to get on it, but I think the intent is to go through and, like, make a fix.
Right.
We have to know there's a period of time.
It won't be available during the summer.
The only off-season we really have now is the winter, and you can't do work on that field in the winter.
Right.
There's baseball in the spring and summer, field hockey in the fall. That's three seasons of use, and then it freezes up in the winter. So to do the work, you have to shut down one of those three seasons.
Right.
Which is frustrating for people who have children in the program now. They're saying that's great, it'll look good next year, but I'll, you know, I'm graduating this June, so it's, it's a balancing act. And, uh, you know, once our high schoolers are done using it, you know, by the end of the weekend, then we have, uh, summer baseball, which could sit in a backseat if we have to.
They're not going to be using it this summer.
Yeah, I think, right, we had talked about the agency plans with, uh, Daigos and those kind of things, right?
Right. Well, didn't we work on Howard Field to make that better?
How small.
I know.
Howard is softball, and that, that's.
Is that better? That's done and taken care of for the football?
They were there probably before it froze over. I don't really know what it's going to do. They did a lot of work in Howard Field.
Yes.
And some of the work that they did on Howard Field hopefully mitigated some of the water issues that you experienced at Killgallen because they were able to level it and build it up on the one side, so.
So that field will be ready for the girls' softball to use.
Yeah. Howard is done.
Kate, Kate had a question.
Um, I was just thinking, um, would you be able to add, um, Killgallen, like, the field on to the agenda? I'm not sure if there is an agenda to Friday's nine AM meeting to discuss with town council for a few different reasons.
That is good.
One, to let them know that the rec teams won't be able to play on it in the summer.
I think they already know that.
Oh, they do?
Yeah. And that is, um, that is one of the topics for discussion, I understand.
Oh, it is on there?
I think so, yeah. From what I heard from under, yes.
Great.
Okay? All right, any other old business? Anybody want to pick on anybody? Okay, good. I'm being facetious on left, okay? A little fuzzy here. Okay. Uh, move to call a pause, old business?
Second.
Who, who said yes? Who said move first? Oh, okay. This is why I don't want to be present. Okay, Claire? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business? Any new business? Um, I, I missed something. Um, last Friday was snow day, um, and the rumor on the street, and it's only here, say, is that we had the schools open because there was a wrestling tournament and some basketball games. When the kids went to Highlander Academy, that parking lot wasn't even plowed yet. So I just want an explanation if that's true or not.
Can you say that again? I didn't hear one thing.
The rumor was that the reason we did not have that snow day was because there was a wrestling tournament, okay? And when the kids got to Highlander Academy, nothing was even plowed yet. So I just want to know if that's true or not.
So I'll just throw out, the wrestling tournament was Saturday, not Friday.
Okay, so it's.
And I was actually going to bring that up to do business. I thought it was great for West Milford to be able to showcase their gym, to be able to crowd there, and to be able to have wrestlers in there from the entire county. But I thought that was a big win for, uh.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I want to know if it's true.
The bad weather day, I thought it was Thursday.
Yeah, I thought it was Thursday also.
It was Thursday morning.
No, it was Thursday. I, I had a snow day, and then, yeah.
And to Ray's point, we host two pretty big wrestling tournaments every year. One is the Pacific County Tournament, and one is the Region Tournament, which is part of the state tournament, and they do a really good job. I know they had a great tournament last week, and it's always well-run. It's, uh, one of the best county tournaments, and we do the regions. It's probably one of the best region tournaments around, so one would have nothing to do with the other. Um, there might have been, uh, high school sports, I'm not sure anyway, there is a sporting event probably every day during the school year, either practice or a game, but that would not have affected into the decision to, um, have delayed opening or, or cancel school. The timing of the storm was very bad. It was, uh, it, it was, it was, hadn't started snowing yet when we made a decision, and kind of, we made a decision, and then five seconds later it started snowing. It was just very bad timing, so.
I just had a couple of phone calls back the other. All right, were there any other issues with? Go ahead.
Well, with that issue, I mean, I fully agree with, uh, what Alex said. I was sitting there thinking, the, the storm was supposed to start at six AM.
And started.
If we had the regular delay, we would have been fine if it started at six AM because they would have had the roads cleaned, but it just was that timing, right? So with that, I'm just curious, in my time on the board, this has never been up for discussion, and I was curious if we've ever discussed having a two-hour delay rather than an hour and a half. Has that been discussed?
Yes, many years ago, there was a discussion. If we have a two-hour delay where a half hour, um, half hour in the negative column of instructional time, so that's why they had to move it to ninety minutes.
Right, so that's the Terry's point, uh, when you, you need a four-hour day to, for the day to count, and it does not include passing time in the hallway between classes or lunch. So two hours delay would not give us enough minutes to meet the four-hour minimum. Um, we would be short, so ninety minutes is about as long as we can do. So, uh, that also factors in a little bit, I guess. We've discussed it, the mask is a little.
Thank you.
That just brings up another point that I have in mind. Why are other schools have longer days than we do? So, like, other schools must have longer days to be able to do two-hour delays.
So, we're not thirty minutes short, but we're a little short. Uh, but my guess would be the district that had the two-hours delay probably have slightly longer instructional days, which gets them over the hump a little bit, sort of, so.
I think it might also be that, uh, other school districts don't do lunch on their late openings, or we do.
I can answer that also from others. Like, they cut the passing time and they cut the lunch time, but you either have to feed the kids or send them home with a lunch, a bag of lunch or something.
And isn't, isn't the number of hours instructional time, is that a negotiated thing?
It is.
It is, so. Any other new business? Kate?
Oh, no, I didn't realize that that would be an negotiating, I had like, uh, the hours of the delay. I really was just thinking as a parent.
I didn't come out the, the.
Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other new business?
Seeing as none, I'll make a motion to close the business.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our public comments. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and or directly related to the operation of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will begin in five minutes for a period of thirty minutes, and then the time committing other public, um, other public, uh, comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide your address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Are there any people who wish to speak? Okay, Ray?
If you're not, I made a motion to pause.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Mike, would you read the executive session, please?
Karen, can we adjourn after executive session, or do we have to come back out?
We'll, we'll probably.
Oh, right, sorry. Yeah.
Go ahead, Ray, uh, Mike.
At eight, what's it, eight twenty? Make a motion, uh, to go into executive session for purposes of discussing personnel, agreements, resignations, current litigations, matters, negotiations, grievances in matters of attorney-client privileges.
Second?
Uh, hang on, I'm not done.
Oh. The executive session may or may not be released until such time as the privileges or confidentiality is no longer.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we will return after executive action. Second, session for action. We will be gone for.
Four hours.
Uh, more than that, probably. Okay.
Roll call? Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
She's here.
She's here.
She's, she was the five minutes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Greenow?
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Okay.
About running in schools.
We are here to vote on number fifteen.
So I'd like to.
Make a motion, Ray?
So I'd like to, uh, make a motion, uh, to vote on item fifteen under personnel.
Second. Okay, uh, Barbara?
No discussion?
Oh, any discussion on this?
Okay, Mr. Greenow?
Outstanding.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
No.
What was that one?
It is. No, it doesn't.
I believe it's a required, you, you get, you charge the full board. Do I also have to reach out to them tomorrow with the. At nine forty-nine, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.